Good evening. I called to order this September 8th meeting of the Winston-Salem City Council. Pursuant to the policies and procedures adopted by the City Council relative to virtual meetings, I've determined that it's not feasible for the City Council and I to meet together physically. And due to the safer-at-home order, all council members are participating virtually. Council members will vote by roll call vote. Council member will be recognized, raise their hand, and state their vote. Would the City Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Larson.
John, I think you're muted.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Bessie.
Here.
Councilmember Cipio.
Present.
Mayor Protem Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Here.
And Councilmember Parman.
Present.
Thank you very much. Would you please join the City Council and me in a moment of silence? Thank you very much. Councilmembers, without objection, before we jump into the agenda, I'd like to make a brief statement regarding the 2020 census. I'm sure Mayor Protem Adams will give us a man on this, but just wanted to remind citizens that the deadline for the 2020 census is now only 22 days away. But there is still time to respond to the 2020 census. And not only does the census determine our representation in Congress, but it also ensures that North Carolina, Forsyth County, and the city of Winston-Salem will get our share of the billions and billions of dollars of federal spending for local programs such as road construction, emergency services, Medicaid, school lunch programs, and housing programs, just to name a few. Now here's a disturbing statistic. Nearly 40% of Forsyth County residents have not responded to the census. And this will have a significant negative impact on our local community. So once again, I'll remind you that the deadline to respond to the census is September 30th, 2020. You can go online and do it. It's very easy. You can go online to my2020census.gov, my2020census.gov, or you can call 1-844-330-2020 and just follow the prompts. So I urge everyone to please complete the census if you haven't, because what you do really has a major impact on Forsyth County and Winston-Salem. Thank you, Council. Tonight's agenda of the City Council is comprised of the following items. There's an item related to a purchase order for police pursuit vehicles. There are six zoning petitions. There are two UDO text amendments. An item related to the Smith Reynolds Airport Whittaker Park Strategic Area Plan. An item approving an economic development assistance to Front Street Capital. An item related to a certificate of public convenience and necessity. And there are five items related to appointments, reappointments to boards or commissions. The zoning petitions, the UDO text amendment, and the Smith Reynolds Airport Whittaker Park Strategic Plan or public hearings, as well as the economic development item and the certificate of public convenience and necessity. And these items are called. I'll give everyone who wants to an opportunity to speak virtually. If there is opposition to the zoning petitions, there'll be 15 minutes for presentation for the proponents and 15 minutes for the opponents, as well as three minutes each for rebuttal. If no one wishes to speak, I'll close the public hearing and the City Council will consider the item. Because we are meeting virtually, we'll also accept written comments on these public hearing items until 7:00 PM tomorrow, September the 9th. Written comments may be sent to the City Clerk's office at PO Box 2511, Winston-Salem 27102, or by email to sandrark@cityofws.org. The written comments, if any, will be forwarded to the mayor and members of the City Council. And if desired, the appropriate City Council member, based on the written comments, can make a motion to reconsider an item at a social meeting. We're televising this meeting live tonight on TV 13, and it will be replayed again Wednesday at 9:00 AM and again Wednesday at 9:00 PM. Copies of the agenda, as well as videos of our meeting, are always available online. It's the city's website, www.cityofws.org, and just select the City Government menu and click the "Watch Meetings Online" option. Ms. King, may we have the first item, please?
Item Z1, resolution awarding purchase order for police pursuit vehicles to Performance Ford Incorporated.
Recognize, I think, Ms. Ford. Would you like to start this off? And I know Mr. Bates is on the call as well. If you need questions there, as well as our Chief Penn.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem Adams and members of the Council. At the August 17th meeting, an item was approved awarding a contract to Asheville Ford for the 62 vehicles that would be purchased for the police department. As staff went to begin that process, we realized that there had been a change in terms of this vendor being available on the list, which through the North Carolina Sheriff's Association to purchase. So at this time, I would ask Mr. Jerry Bates, our purchasing director, if he would provide a little bit more detail on this item. Jerry?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Joins, Mayor Protem Adams, and members of the Council. As Ms. Ford was commenting, that Asheville Ford had been selected as the recipient of a competitive bid contract through the Sheriff's Association. However, following that award, we were made aware that Asheville Ford could not fulfill the requirements of their contract. They were terminated, and on August 25th, the Sheriff's Association awarded the competitive bid contract for the Ford Interceptors to Performance Ford Incorporated. They were, they're located in Clinton, North Carolina. Performance Ford has offered a quotation to the city for the quantity of 62 Ford Interceptor SUV pursuit vehicles that meets all the specifications required by the city in an amount of $32,845.30 each, for a total of all 62 vehicles at $2,036,408.60. Therefore, we're recommending that the purchase order be awarded to Performance Ford Incorporated for the purchase of the 62 Ford Interceptors in the amount of $32,845.30 each, for a total award $2,036,408.60.
Thank you, Mr. Bates. Are there any questions for Mr. Bates or Ms. Logan Ford? Councilmember Larson?
Am I correct, am I correct in understanding that this bid price is actually less than what we approved back in August?
Yes, sir. You are correct in understanding that. It's in the neighborhood of around $100 lower cost. We have pursued explanation of why that occurred. And for the lack of more clear information from the Sheriff's Association, I think that's one of the main reasons why the contractor, the bidder in August was, their contract was terminated. And, but the price, we are absolutely correct that this price of $32,845 is the correct amount. It's about $100 per vehicle less.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Bessie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I apologize for missing this question in August. But this would either go to Mr. Bates, or perhaps Assistant Chief Penn would be more appropriate. But am I reading the carve correctly that this is an SUV vehicle, SUV-style vehicle?
Chief Penn?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Protem and Councilmembers. That is correct. It is an SUV. I think we established at the last meeting that Chargers, the only sedan at this point that provides us with the police package. And it was explained that we weren't, want to be able to get that in any time soon. So yes, it is an SUV.
And I guess, thank you. My question would be, do we really need that many SUV-style pursuit vehicles?
Yes, sir. We're extremely short on vehicles, and, and the SUV is just the only vehicle we can get right now. We're how, how far, how short are we?
We could use over 100.
Yeah. We're way short on vehicles, sir. Yes.
Yeah. I hear you on the urgency, the need. I just, I'm sorry to see us having to buy the larger vehicles when we, when we work pretty hard to sort of right-size our vehicle fleet for efficiency. But, thank you.
Thank you. I'd entertain a motion.
Move approval?
Second.
Second. I think it was a motion by Councilmember Clark and second by Councilmember Cipio. Any further discussion? If not, we'll go to a roll call. Councilmember Larson?
Excuse me, Mayor.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Adams, Mayor Protem Adams.
I just wanted the staff, Mr. Bates, or Chief Penn to elaborate on the fact again that the vehicles that we had before, they're not the ones that they're making anymore. And most of the public safety organizations are going to this style of vehicle. Can someone elaborate on that, please?
Chief Penn?
Yes, ma'am. There were several sedans that were in the police package that just, those manufacturers stopped making those vehicles. So we were down to either an SUV or the Chargers. Those were our only two options. Most of the cities in North Carolina have gone to some sort of SUV, either the Ford Interceptor, Dodge Durango, or Tahos.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Penn. Councilmember Larson did the affirmative. Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Bessie?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cipio?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Adams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
And Councilwoman Parman?
Aye.
Thank you. That's unanimous to approve. Item Z2?
Item Z2, public hearing on zoning petition of D2 Gero LLC from HB-S to HB-S. Property is located at the northwest corner of the intersection of Orchard View Drive and West Clemensville Road, located in the South Ward. Planning Board recommends approval petition.
Thank you. Mr. King, do we have anyone who wish, who wish to be heard in public hearing?
Mayor Joins, we have applicant Luke Dickey here. We have no one signed up in opposition.
All right, very good. I'll close the public hearing then, and I'll recognize Councilmember Larson.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, Councilmembers, this is an example of a company that's thriving and expanding, and I'm very happy to recommend approval. For one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and for W3450.
Is there a second? Thank you. A second. Any discussion, further discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to the roll call. Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bessie?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cipio?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Adams? Mayor Protem Adams?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
And Councilwoman Parman?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Item Z3?
Item Z3, public hearing on zoning petition of ZCBR Properties LLC from LI to GBL. Property is located on the southeast side of North Glenn Avenue, south of Akron Drive, located in the northeast ward. Planning Board recommends approval petition.
Thank you. King, anyone signed up in opposition to this one?
Mayor Joins, we have the applicant Michael Mitchell. We have no one signed up in opposition.
Thank you. Therefore, I'll close the public hearing. I'll recognize Councilmember Parman.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem and Councilmembers. I move for approval of the statement of consistency in approval of the item and W3451.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Thank you. We'll go to the roll call. Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Bessie?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cipio?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
And Councilwoman Parman?
Aye.
Thank you. That's unanimous to approve. We'll go to item Z4?
Item Z4, public hearing on zoning petition of the Commons of Forsyth County Incorporated from NU-S to RS9 to NU-S. Property is located on the west side of Old Greensboro Road at its intersection with US 158 and Ritter Road, located in the northeast ward. Planning Board recommends approval of petition.
Thank you. Mr. King, is anyone signed up in opposition to this case?
Mayor Joins, we have the applicant Bryce Sheever here. We have no one signed up in opposition.
Thank you. I'll declare the public hearing closed, and again, I'll recognize Councilmember Parman.
Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and rest of the board members and Mayor Protem Adams. I move for the approval of, one, a statement of consistency for the approval of this item, and, two, W3452.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion of this item? Seeing none, we'll move to the roll call. Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bessie?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cipio?
Yes.
Council, Mayor Protem Adams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
And Councilwoman Parman?
Aye.
Thank you. That is unanimous for approval. Item Z5?
Item Z5, public hearing on zoning petition of Jemias Ariere LLC from RS9 to RMA-S. Property is located on the west side of University Parkway, north of Sunview Road, located in the northeast ward. Planning Board recommends approval of petition.
Thank you. Mr. King, is anyone in opposition to this rezoning?
Mayor Joins, we have Greer, Taylor, and Marshall Edelman in support. We have no one signed up in opposition.
Thank you. Therefore, I'll close the public hearing, and again, I'll recognize Councilmember Parman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move for approval of, one, a statement of consistency for the approval of this item, and, two, for W3453.
Second.
Thank you. Motion and a second. Any further discussion of this item? Seeing none, we'll go to the roll call. Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bessie?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cipio?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
And Councilwoman Parman?
Aye.
Thank you. That is unanimous for approval. Item Z6?
Item Z6, public hearing on zoning petition of White Oak Vista LLC from LB-L to GB-S. Property is located on the north side of Country Club Road across from Tucker Avenue. No recommendation of petition.
Thank you. Mr. King, do we have individuals signed up in opposition?
Mayor Joins, we do. So we'll have a public hearing on this. We have several folks signed up to speak in support, and I'm ready to provide those names whenever you're ready to begin.
All right. Just remind everyone, we allow 15 minutes for proponents and 15 minutes for opposition. So we'll begin. If you would just call their names out, Mr. King?
I suspect the first person will likely be Doug Stimmel or Luke Dickey, and then we'll go down the list from there.
Okay?
And...
State your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mayor Joins. This is Doug Stimmel. Jamie Bennett will go first, and then I will go second.
Thanks, Doug. This is Jamie Bennett. I reside at 125 Northwest View, Upper Country Club Road, here in Winston-Salem. I represent a group of developers and investors, local developers, investors, with over 30 years of experience in this community. And we have spent time on the site trying to look at different uses and have concluded that, you know, retail and office are not suitable uses based in today's marketplace, and we are proposing putting a self-storage facility on the property. We've put our best foot forward in architectural design and civil design to meet the needs of the neighborhood. Most of our customers come from a three-mile radius, so we are eager to serve the local community. And, you know, our source of, the proposing is an all-indoor self-storage facility. It's climate-controlled. There's no outdoor storage. It is secure at night. And we believe that this build will provide over $10 million of tax value to Winston-Salem.
Thank you, Mr. Stimmel.
Thank you, Mayor Joins, Mayor Protem, and City Councilmembers. Doug Stimmel with Stimmel Associates, 601 North Trade Street, Suite 200, Winston-Salem 27101. Happy to be here tonight. I'm going to walk you through the site plan, if you'd be so kind, just to put up the PowerPoint presentation.
And I believe Amy Crum and our staff will pull that up. There it goes.
Great. Thank you. As you can see, Country Club Storage Facility, you can see an image of the rendering on the front. I'm going to talk more about that in just a minute. Next slide, please. I'd like to walk you through the site plan a little bit. You can see the building in the middle. It's about 87,000 square feet. You'll notice one significant item is that there are only 12 parking spaces on the entire site plan. The building is pulled to the front of, towards Country Club Road and away from the residential neighborhood to the north. The 12 parking spaces are extremely limited. If you look at the traffic count, it's about 30 trips per day, based upon their experience. This is a two-story building, and where the dash line is towards the back, we agreed to step the building down as the slip goes away from you, to step that building down for less impact. So a couple of key points on stormwater. We've gone the extra mile. We actually exceed the city stormwater management ordinance. There's a sand filter to the rear of the building. Rather than designing it for the minimum standard, we increased that and designed it for a 50-year storm instead, which is a much larger and a better design to be a better neighbor to the residential land in the north. In addition to that, we're taking the roof drains and the majority of the building and reducing the storm drainage that naturally goes to the rear of the property. We're pulling it to the front to Country Club Road and tying it into the existing storm drainage system and over-managing it so that we can reduce the amount of drainage that actually flows towards the residential land. Significant thing that you'll notice is, this site is sandwiched between existing retail on the left. There's a Dollar General and various other shops with parking in the front. We followed the area plan and planning's guidance, moved the building to the front. And we've done it, gone the extra mile to create attractive architecture, I'm going to talk about in a minute. And the site to the right is another non-residential use, which is Trinity United Methodist Church. So we're sandwiched between those two uses, and we're already zoned LBL. I want to point out particularly, to the north of our building, towards the residential. You see all those trees. There's a 40-foot undisturbed buffer. We're going to save a lot of trees in there. I would estimate there's about 10 existing trees we're trying to save in that undisturbed buffer. And we're also doing a 20-foot buffer to the right, adjacent to the prayer garden and the existing church to the right area. Next slide, please. This is a neighborhood transition buffer, so I think it shows it rather clearly when we highlight all the open space, the tree save and the buffers. It's .84 acres, and you can see very clearly how all of the parking is pulled towards the front, away from the neighborhood. And the remainder of it, we don't want parking in the back like the current zoning allows. We want the parking in the front. And we don't want dumpsters in the back. We want them up in the front, away from the neighborhood. We tried very hard to make this all work with those buffers that we worked out with planning and some of the neighbors as well. Next slide, please. This is a cross-section from our proposed facility on the right. To the left, you can see the residential house below. You'll see the existing trees and the 40-foot buffer in the middle there. And we're doing additional planting as needed to supplement all of that area. There's no paving behind this building like there currently be under the LBL zoning today. We want this to be a good neighbor, a good quiet neighbor, adjacent to that residential use. Next slide, please. Here is a rendering from the architect that wanted this to have a nice, high-quality presence on the street. It's pulled up to the street. The nice thing is, it looks just like an office building. It looks like an office building without the people and without the traffic. Next slide, please. The West Suburban Area Plan is, is what is located here. If you look at the arrow and the little yellow star in the middle, you'll notice that all of the red is recommended to be commercial, and most of it already is commercial. Our site is LBL and commercial as well at that red star. And we're sandwiched sort of between the church and the existing retail. We think we are an excellent transition buffer between those two, because we're such a low-intense use. Our proposed storage facility is less intense than the already-approved LBL zoning. And for example, on the left-hand side, you see the yellow highlighting. Existing LBL includes a dry cleaner, which we agreed to take off our list of uses. It has sit-down restaurants, retail, and higher-traffic generators. The area plan calls for this site to be commercial, and the building pulled to the street. We, we follow all those guidelines, which is why planning staff recommended approval of this. Next slide, please. Traffic comparison. We went to Randy Kemp and Associates, a traffic consultant, and said, "Look at the existing zoning in LBL." If it was general office, retail, and sit-down restaurant, which is allowed in LBL currently, those numbers would generate 697 average, average trips per day. Compare it to our proposed zoning for a storage facility. Based on the client's project actuals from experience in doing this type of facility, it's 30 trips per day. So the existing LBL zoning generates approximately 23 times more trips per day than this facility will, will create. Next slide, please. Neighborhood outreach, as you all know, we always reach out to the neighborhood. We sent letters to 217 property owners all the way around the property. Of importance, you have a letter in your packet which says Trinity United Methodist Church Board sent a letter supporting the zoning request, and they're our immediate neighbor to the right. We receive responses when we send out the letters to two owners. Luke Dickey and myself have reached out, or Luke has, to the petitioner, as well as other developers on our team have reached out to petitioner and contacted both of those owners and had conversations. Next slide, please. Reasons to approve. This site is already zoned commercial. This proposed storage use is less intense than the existing zoning that's in place today. GBS zoning is what we went to, and it is restricted to this site plan. So the advantage of this proposal is you have a site-specific site plan that we have to adhere to. We're only showing 12 parking spaces. Any uses requiring more than 12 spaces would require the site plan to come back to the City Council. So that's a tremendous safeguard for the neighborhood that they don't have right now, because there's no site plan approval on the current zoning. Parking and other things can go wherever they want to go on the site, especially without a site plan. We're proposing 12 parking spaces only, which is extremely low generator. Number four, the building looks like an office building with no people and no traffic. Five, we removed two uses, the dry cleaner and outdoor recreation. We didn't think those were a good fit for the neighborhood, and then residents asked us to remove the dry cleaner, and we agreed. Number six, traffic. This type of facility generates 30 trips per day versus 697 with the existing zoning. Remember, there's only 12 parking spaces. Stormwater management. This plan exceeds the city ordinance. It's a 50-year storm design. And in addition to that, we're reducing the storm drainage area going towards the residential. Number eight, this is consistent with the West Suburban Area Plan and Legacy 2030. Nine proposes an additional buff yard and screening for adjacent zoning and residential properties, as well as for the church. Planning staff recommends approval, and Trinity United Methodist Church Board supports this rezoning. And last but not least is, this brings in a significant tax base with very little cost or infrastructure needs from schools, police, or anything. It's a low, low-traffic generator and a very quiet neighbor and a great transitional use to the church and the neighborhood. We'll be happy to answer any questions at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Is that all for the proponents? Mr. Stimmel?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Stimmel, at this point? All right, let's hear from the opposition then. Opposition would have fifteen minutes as well.
Mayor, Mayor Joins, the first person signed up, and I think it's the only person signed up to speak in opposition, is Emily Bickel. So, Emily, if you can hear me, please go ahead and unmute yourself, provide your name and address for the record, and begin your remarks.
My name's Emily Bickel. As you just said, my address is thirty-eight thirty Cavalier Drive, so we are directly catty-cornered to this. Now, first, I'd like to maybe correct a few things that didn't seem entirely accurate in saying that this was already all LBL. Well, we're actually kind of piggybacking on a previous rezoning that was before-approved for a mixed-use retail space that wasn't built. Before that, the house office that's still sitting there is RS nine. That's got apparently the oldest and largest oak tree in Winston Salem. It's going to be cut down for this. I know some neighbors were opposed to that. The forty-foot buffer is pretty much the same thing that is already existing next door, behind the Dollar General and the other shops there, that really to us is very ineffective and doesn't do much. Now, as innocuous as a storage facility may seem, I think once you've changed the zoning, which is the really odious part of this, from LB to GB, which doesn't exist anywhere right there now, then you're already sort of setting a direction for this area that has really long-term implications. I don't think it's unreasonable to ask the council and the planning board to stop and take a look at what Charlotte did in a similar situation back in 2015, when they had a lot of upscale type of storage facilities wanting to locate in more urban areas. And what they did was they changed some of their zoning requirements so that these businesses could fit into existing areas better. And one of the things they did was to require a lot of the design elements that are already here in this building, like only internal entrances, et cetera, design requirements for the exterior. But they also did fifty percent ground-floor retail excluding some undesirable businesses. Like they said, no checkcashing, no convenience stores. But I would really hope that the city, and I sent this over a week ago, that I really would hope that the city council would stop and talk to some of their counterparts in Charlotte and see how that was working out for them. Because one of the things that came up during the planning meeting was that some members of the planning board did not actually consider this to be a creative enough proposal, and also that no one was really sure why a storage facility would want to be, pay more tax-wise to be in the middle of a neighborhood. And that's why I started looking at this after the planning board meeting, so I apologize for not having any of that information previously, but I think it's something to think about before going ahead and approving this. We already have one business directly behind us that's been in violation of their zoning, and it's acting like they're a GB-zoned business for over a year that we've been trying to get the city to deal with, which so far hasn't been completely successful. There's already, I think the stormwater aspect is good because we do already have issues with dry cleaning solvent runoff. And we'd really like to not see this area neglected. And one of the larger concerns about the zoning is that if you go ahead and approve something for GB, even excluding a few things, then if we go back to this gets approved, this gets built, and then it goes out of business, I think sort of the horse has already left the gate, then it's already clear that the council's okay with GB-zoned businesses here. More of the adjoining lots may try for that, and we don't know what would be built if this goes out of business. I don't think you can expect it to be there forever, so we're trying to think a little more long-term, which is why we would like to look at some of the requirements Charlotte had, which would, and what they did was change their ordinance so that they wouldn't have to actually have a more onerous zoning to put an upscale facility in a more urban location. So, I don't know if anyone received or read that email, but that would be something we would really hope you'd look at before going ahead and approving this. In a way, the zoning itself is a bit more onerous than the facility as it stands because of what future use it might entail. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bickel. Is there anyone else for the opposition?
Mayor, Mayor Joins, we don't have anybody else signed up in opposition at this point.
All right. All right, we'll get back. The proponents would have three minutes for rebuttal. Mr. Stimmel or others?
Yes, Mayor Joins, I appreciate the comments. One protection that GBS has is that we have a site plan. So, with twelve parking spaces, there are very few uses that could be on this site with just twelve spaces, or else it would have to come back to the city council and the planning board for review of anything else. So, that further restricts what can be on the property in GBL. And just for the record, there's highway business immediately adjacent to us to the left. So, there are highway business uses. We're GB only because an important fact is eighty-five percent of the people who will lease space in here come from within three miles in the residential area. So, in the last ten years, the reason that these are being placed in neighborhoods is because neighborhoods want them within close proximity to where they live. And that's why their experience shows that eighty-five percent of it is from three miles away. So, it is a neighborhood business now. It wasn't ten, fifteen, or twenty years ago. Totally different product. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stimmel. The opposition would have three minutes for rebuttal if you would like to do that, Ms. Bickel.
Bickel, and actually, I'd like to ask a question in response to what Wes just said, more directed towards the council. So, if you were inclined to approve this for GBS now, how would that affect your disposition towards approving adjoining businesses for GB in the future?
I think each case stands on its own merits, doesn't necessarily create any type of precedent necessarily. So, each case would stand on its own.
Well, I would still say it's not much of a neighborhood business in that it's not really something that's going to make the area more walkable, or people are going to go to very often at all. While it being a bit of a ghost town is one of the pluses that's being touted here, I do think we would rather see something that serves the people of the neighborhood more directly as any sort of gathering place or offers more utility for them. So, we would still at least like to really try for that fifty percent ground-floor retail to do something there other than just a really huge out-of-place box. I mean, this has been compared at the planning meeting to the Robin Hood Road area, and this is just completely different than that. That's like seventy-two acres. This is only fourteen. This is going to be really pretty huge in the scale of what's beside it. And it's honestly, I don't think it's going to do much for the people living here. Everyone I've heard from has said that they would prefer something. Now, I know nobody's going to invest right this minute necessarily in like a cafe or a restaurant, but the general consensus seemed to be that this wasn't really much of a neighborhood business. It didn't offer much to what's really sort of a smaller neighborhood shopping center area, and that it didn't fit in at all.
Thank you very much. I will now declare the public hearing closed and recognize Mr. King for the report of the planning board.
Thank you, Mayor Joins. I'll ask Amy Crum on our staff to go ahead and pull that slideshow up, and I'll run through that for the council. All right, so again, this is a little bit under two acres on the north side of Country Club, across from Tucker Avenue, and the request before you is to rezone from limited business, limited use to general business, special use. And there are several uses included, but the one that we're specifically talking about tonight is storage services retail. Next slide, please. Here is the location map with the subject property shown in yellow. Again, you can see the existing LBL zoning that's located there in the Gordon Manor area. You can see this is kind of on the eastern edge of a small little commercial node there that is comprised of limited business and some highway business, special use zoning there. The shopping center is directly to the left of this site and a church to the right, and then a single-family home zone RS nine to the north there. Next slide, please. Here's an aerial image, looking at the subject property outlined in yellow. Next slide, please. And a few photos taken on site. This is looking into the subject property from Country Club Road. Next, next slide. This is on the subject property. This is looking west on Country Club Road, back towards the remainder of the commercial area from the subject property. Next slide. And this is from the subject property, looking back east on Country Club Road at the adjacent church. Next slide, please. This is an image of the West Suburban Area Plan and update, and you can see the property boundaries shown there. It is identified in red, which is recommended for commercial use in the area plan. Next slide, please. This is the site plan. Mr. Stimmel went over this in detail, so I won't belabor the point. Again, this request is for about eighty-seven thousand square-foot self-storage facility, you can see, which is denoted by the red shading there. As you look, you can see the tan shading shows where the stormwater device would be located. And then the green shading there is the forty-foot undisturbed buffer that is adjacent to the single-family homes that wraps around the eastern edge of the property there. One access point off of Country Club Road and twelve parking spaces with three loading spaces is already mentioned. Next slide, please. These are the elevations that have been submitted with this request. You've already seen these, and that would be the vantage point of looking from Country Club Road. So, as a quick summary, the majority of the site has been zoned commercially since going back to about nineteen ninety-four. As I mentioned, the area plan does recommend commercial for this site, and the use shown on the proposed site plan is not expected to generate a lot of traffic. One good thing about the site plan is the parking and vehicular circulation is not pushed northward into the site adjacent to the single-family homes. That's kept up towards Country Club Road. And another aspect is the stormwater management. Stormwater's managed to meet the fifty-year event, whereas our city minimum standard is twenty-five. So, there's an additional stormwater protection that goes above and beyond. Next, next slide, please. This item was heard by the planning board at their August thirteenth public hearing. We had two speakers in support, three in opposition, and many of the issues that you heard here tonight were discussed there. Concern about outdoor recreation uses, stormwater runoff, some of the effectiveness of the buffer yard, and really the question about the appropriateness of self-storage at this location. The planning board made a motion for approval on this request, and the vote was four to four. So, this comes to the city council with no recommendation. And I'm glad to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, Ms. King. Are there questions of Mr. King at this time?
Yes, Mr. King, I have looked over the site plans and, you know, driven around the site, you can get a clear view from Cavalier, the street behind it, of how densely parts of this site are covered with very mature hardwoods. Was there any consideration to taking a look at whether it would be possible to flip the orientation of the building on the front side in order to save that reference legacy oak tree there?
Councilor Bessie, I would defer that to the site plan designer to see what conversations they had about that design issue that you just mentioned.
Mr. Stimmel, can you comment?
Sure. We took a look at the one tree that was up there, Councilmember Bessie, and that tree has a root zone that would extend well past the one lot where the house, current house is. And by flipping it would force you to push the parking likely to the back of the site near the neighborhood. And we didn't think that was a good compromise because we felt that the parking away from the residential neighborhood to the north was a better alternative, and the fact that we were saving approximately ten trees to the south was, to the north, excuse me, was a better scenario.
Bessie, I got your questions?
Yeah, I'm not sure that I'm convinced, but that was a direct answer. I appreciate.
Any other questions of Mr. King? Councilman Cipio.
Oh, thank you. My question is, I think it was answered that the tree would not be saved, but importantly, Mr. King, that Gordon Manor is a very quaint kind of shopping area, and the neighborhood is very quaint. It seems to me like the design of the building is sort of out of character with the look of the other buildings that are there in Gordon Manor. You lose some of that charm that is in the shopping center. Is that, has that been discussed by anyone as a concern about the character of the neighborhood and how that particularly sort of contemporary building will look as you go down Country Club Road?
Councilmember Cipio, good points and good questions. And yes, we did have discussions about that, and I know that's been a concern that's raised. I will tell you flatly, it is a big building, and there's, that's just to be frank about it. It's a big building. I think some of the positive aspects that help to soften some of that are, number one, from Country Club Road, it appears as a two-story building, so the massing helps there. And two, I think one of the things that staff looked at is basically being on the edge of this activity center. It's not jammed in the middle of the, of the activity center. It is on the edge, and it's between a shopping center, which does have a fairly large footprint to it, and the church. So, I think those were things that helped, at least from a staff standpoint, that gave us some comfort in that. But yes, it is a large building, and that's clearly a statement.
Thank you, Mr. King. Well, I will recognize Councilmember Clark, oh, excuse me, Councilwoman Larson, have a question?
Yes, well, comments and questions?
Right now, Mr. Larson, please.
Went through the, I went to the site today and inspected it, and there is a wonderful grove of oak trees there. Some of them are saved by the church and their meditation garden. But I am kind of curious still about the heritage oak, the two-hundred-year-old oak apparently, which I witnessed. And it is tragic to think that it's departing. And I'm wondering what the developer, since they're calling themselves, I think, the White Oak Company, what they're planning to do with that particular tree or the wood from it? You know, what kind of mitigation, if any? And I'm curious of how many white oaks are actually saving on the site. Do we have a number on that?
Mr. Stimmel, can you comment on that?
I don't know about the exact number of white oaks, but we're, as I mentioned earlier, to the north, we think we're saving ten law- as I mentioned earlier, to the north, we think we're saving ten large trees on the north side in that forty-foot undisturbed buffer. And I don't, and I do not know how many of them are white oaks, but they're pretty large trees in that area.
Probably most of them. Is there any plans for saving any of the wood or using it? That white oak is incredible resource of material. I would hate just to see it go to landfill. Any, any plans to try to make that lumber or do anything with it?
I can certainly ask the developer what they plan to do with that. And Jamie, I don't know if you want to comment on that?
Yeah, thanks, Doug. I'm, I'm open to suggestions. I, it grieves me as much as anybody to lose a tree. We've tried very hard to work with the site plan to save as many trees as we can. The trees to the north are of substantial size. I know we're all focusing on the one tree we're going to lose, but I think that we've got a lot of great trees on the north side. So if there are suggestions on what to do with the lumber from this white oak, I'm more than happy to consider it. We don't want to be wasteful either.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Larson.
I have a second question.
Do you have another question?
Yes, I noticed that there was a ruin of an earlier building on the site, which I assume dates back to the early rezoning that actually put a condition to save that white oak. Do we know anything about the history of the construction of that site at all? As to what, what happened there? I mean, I'm disappointed that we're not seeing a more community-based function going on the lower levels of this building as well.
Stimmel, you have.
If I'm allowed to speak, that was the Wright's Bird Store.
Excuse me, ma'am, you're out of order.
Sorry.
Mr. Stimmel, are you, are you able to comment on that?
In terms of planning and any? Yes, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Planning will know better on any historical significance of the property, but it was, it was the Wright's Bird Store that was removed some time ago in the middle of the site. And Aaron may know more about anything else that was on the site, but we were not aware of anything historically there.
I'm not aware of anything else in addition to what's already been stated by Ms. Bickel and Mr. Stimmel. Our, our staff did not flag it for any historical significance that usually gets caught through our review.
I mean, if I may ask, the question really revolves around expectations of the neighborhood. In the rezoning that occurred back in the nineteen nineties, in the sense that it'd be a neighborhood businesses going in there, and they tore down a business in preparation to do that, and here it is, you know, twenty years later or whatever. And there's no neighborhood really component of this, this development. I mean, that sort of runs counter to what was promised back in the nineties.
All right, any other questions of Mr. King? All right, thank you. I would recognize Councilmember Clark for a motion if he's ready.
Yes, Mayor, hang on a minute, I got to call this up. And Mayor, if there's a second, I would like to comment.
Yes.
I move for, for approval of, one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and, two, W three, four, four, nine.
Motion, second. Go ahead, Mr. Clark.
I've got some quick comments. I'll try to go through them quickly. John, first off, to answer your question, it was a seed store, a bird seed store. It was torn down. It got to be quite dilapidated, and it was torn down. I will say, I would not plan on commenting on this, but I would, the last word I would use to describe this area is quaint. We have two gas stations, a nightclub, Dollar General, and just kind of odds and ends. Nothing matches, and it's got one, one restaurant's got a diner, which is nice. I eat there for breakfast regularly, and maybe some small retail there. We rarely have, anyway, those are some specific questions that were raised. We rarely have zoning issues in the west ward, but when they do, they always tend to be difficult and different. This is an, somewhat of an odd building to put in, but I am supporting it. There are a couple of things I like about it. First off, it is needed. I am not there yet, but apparently there is a strong demand for climate-controlled inside storage. There's another, there's one way out. Robin Hood at Metal Arc's been built. There's one on Robin Hood at Sherwood Plaza. There's one by the baseball stadium downtown, and this is another one. Do not confuse this with single-story outdoor type of center-blocked buildings. It's a, basically, as we said earlier, it is an office building with no traffic and no people. I do, however, have some strong issues. And the first one by far is, is stormwater management. What we have here is where commercial meets residential. I had a similar situation a number of years ago when they built the new Masonic Lodge on Country Club down about two or three blocks. Not only does this building meet, it exceeds the required stormwater requirement. And while Doug passed this quickly, the actual area that will drain to the back is less than it is now because they're taking most of the impervious surface and bringing it to the street. It's limited to two stories. I think the church has a three-story office building beside it, or maybe two and a half. And in Gordon Manor, there is a two-story commercial building. They have eliminated some uses that other people have had issues with. Next door in the strip mall is a exercise place, which I think is having outdoor recreation or exercise now, which is an issue. And there's some dry cleaners that close that we have issues, and both those have been eliminated. They do have a letter of support from the church. When they say very little traffic, I can testify, I drive by the storage unit on Robin Hood at least three to four times a week. That is a busier road than Country Club. I have never in the seven or eight years it's been there ever seen a car come in and out, and I've only seen a one car parked there twice. I don't know who uses it, but they don't use it when I'm up. But very, very, very little traffic. They are trying to save as many trees as possible. While we're losing the big one up front, there are a number of larcens in the back that are there. This does meet the area plan, and I think they will be very good neighbors with a church on one side and a strip center on the other. And with that, those were my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Councilwoman McIntosh?
Yeah, just a couple of quick comments. I've had a couple of storage projects built in my ward. The one on Robin Hood is in the northwest ward, and I can tell you that the need for it exists. Their occupancy rate is very high. As a matter of fact, several people who were not in favor of it when it was up for rezoning now, now have storage units there. So it's a need that's, that's growing. The, the Wright's Bird Center moved across the street. I frequent that, so they did not leave the neighborhood when that last project came up for, for, for use. And then thirdly, if the developer, if this goes through, and developer is interested in finding somebody to, to work with the wood, there are a couple of people in town that have mobile sawmills and a couple of folks that are in that business of reclaiming lumber. So I can make connections there.
Thank you, Councilwoman McIntosh. Councilor Bessie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I got a fairly late email from one of the other neighborhood residents, church members there who contacted me because I represent the southwest ward, which is directly across the street from the site. A lot of the sites that are proposed for small redevelopments along that stretch of Country Club are essentially on the line between Councilmember Clark's ward and mine. So I try to take those inquiries seriously and take a look. And I had a chance to speak. I apologize to both Mr. Stimmel and Councilmember Clark for contacting them late. But I had a chance to speak with both, both of them this afternoon, and I certainly respect the work that they have done to address the stormwater questions and the questions regarding impact on the backside of the lot. I think that the tree safe area, particularly on the backside, is of respectable effort. I am troubled by the loss of that particular large legacy tree on the front. I am not fully persuaded that there isn't an imaginative way to reconfigure the placement that avoids putting the parking spaces on the back and still gives us an opportunity to also conserve that larger tree. So I'm not comfortable, given the, the location, outreach from some of the other concerned neighbors with, with moving forward with a positive vote this evening. If this were to be postponed and, and another look taken at that, I can, I can certainly support that. But if, if we have an up or down vote this evening, I'll, I'll have to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Do we have a motion and a second to approve this rezoning? We'll go to the roll call. Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bessie?
No.
Councilman Cipio?
No.
Mayor Pro Tim Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor? Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parman?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes. Six in favor, two oppose. The petition is approved. Thank you very much, Councilmember Clark. Item, please.
Item Z seven, public hearing on zoning petition of Arbor Acres United Methodist Retirement Community Incorporated. From RMA dash S to C dash S, property is located south of Arbor Road across from Arbor Place Court, located in the northwest ward. County Board recommends approval of petition.
Thank you. Ms. King, do we have opponents to this item?
Mayor Joins, we do. We have several opponents, and we have some folks signed up in support. And if you'd like to begin, it looks like Andrew Applegate and Steve Causey are the first two signed up proponents.
All right. Thank you for the proponents. We have fifteen minutes. Mr. Applegate?
My name is Andrew Applegate. I live at six eleven Hurtford Road, Winston-Salem, two seven one oh four. And I have the privilege of serving as the president and CEO of Arbor Acres. And thank you, Mayor Joins, and Mayor Pro Tim Adams and the council for considering our zoning request. As of 2020, Arbor Acres has served Winston-Salem for forty years. And in these challenging times, as we all have to deal with the challenges of COVID-19, I'm just really pleased the fact that we have done a fantastic job of not only serving those who live at Arbor Acres, but also to be able to maintain the staff in the presence of so many layoffs and furloughs, as well as to deal with and to serve the families who have been, unfortunately, have been unable to visit their loved ones at Arbor Acres. But even in the midst of all this, we have continued to work as a community, as a board, to look forward. Like most entities, senior living communities have evolved involved their services and facilities to stay viable and competitive. And this project is really designed to strengthen Arbor Acres' ability to continue to serve the community for another forty years. Steve Causey, our civil engineer, will tell you more about the project in a minute, but I do want to give thanks to John Wiegowski, who is one of our neighbors, who has reached out to me about concerns that they have regarding traffic. And we've been working with John and others to find ways to address both the speed and volume issues that they have concerns about. It's been a pleasure to work with John and Steve, albeit via email. One of the results of those conversations is that we have, I have personally directed all commercial traffic that comes to Arbor Acres as well as staff to continue to avoid using the Kent Road, Arbor Road, and Twenty-Fifth Street, but also to come to the property through the Pilgrim Court access via Coliseum. And will be something I was happy to do, and we will continue to educate our residents about the impact their driving has on our neighbors, both to the east and the west. Some of our neighbors also have a concern about the trap, especially the speed of vehicles. And as someone who lives in a neighborhood that is a cut-through, I empathize with those concerns and regardless of where the traffic is coming from. Because of these reasons, I've really, I've asked Steve Causey to continue to work with our neighbors to find solutions to their traffic concerns and until such point where we can come to some solution to address those issues. And I understand those efforts are going well. At this point, I will try to go over to Steve Causey to go over our project.
Steve Causey?
Yep. Steve Causey, Allied Design, forty-seven twenty, Kestrel Mill Road, Winston-Salem, two seven one zero three. Our planning efforts for this space focused on the interior core section of the campus. When we began, it was quickly apparent that vertical expansion provided several advantages. It allowed us to minimize increase in impervious area. It allowed us to maintain existing development and zoning patterns in an approximate five-hundred-foot zone around the perimeter of the campus. We met with planning staff through the sketch plan process to discuss the zoning options that would facilitate the redevelopment. The campus district seemed to be the best fit, and the district was consistent with the recommendations of Legacy and the Northwest Area Plan. Early in the process, planning staff did express concerns about visibility from the adjoining properties. We were able to cite the tallest building and one of the lowest points on campus and minimize visibility from the adjacent properties. We did conduct a neighborhood outreach meeting on June twenty-fifth in the parking lot of twenty-six oh one Pilgrim Court. At that time, no adjoining property owners were in attendance. Shortly after the meeting, Arbor Acres received communication from the neighbors in the Renolda Park area expressing concerns about them. We agreed to an automatic continuance at that time to allow time for dialogue with the neighbors. One of the primary concerns communicated at that time was traffic along Kent Road and Arbor Road. We did engage a traffic consultant, Jay Clapp, with Ramey Kemp and Associates to perform an analysis of traffic patterns and help us understand what the issues were. We conducted a Zoom meeting with representatives of the neighborhood on July twenty-first, at which time the residents primarily elaborated their concerns about the potential for increased traffic on East Kent, West Kent, and Arbor Road. They advised of previous efforts to implement traffic calming strategies through the city's traffic calming. We agreed to a subsequent meeting with the neighbors to understand their concerns and get Jeff Fensler's involvement in the Transportation Department. On August sixth, we did conduct a Zoom meeting with Jeff Fensler in attendance and a smaller group representing the Renolda Park area. We were able to share our traffic data at that time, and the results did confirm speeding was an issue. As noted in the staff report, the current average daily trip count on Arbor Road is about twenty-eight hundred vehicles per day. The road has a capacity of eleven thousand vehicles per day. Again, it was primarily a speed-related issue, apparently. Jeff did a good job of explaining the city's traffic calming policy again. He agreed to facilitate another request for implementation of traffic calming measures. The neighborhood initiated a request for traffic calming, and it's my understanding the city is currently investigating the options that are available. I'll be around, available to answer questions.
Thank you. Anyone else for the proponents? All right, we'll now move to the opposition. Mr. King, if you would let us know who is to speak on the opposition?
Mayor Joins, we have several speakers signed up in opposition. We'll go down the list, and we'll begin with John Wiegowski. So, Mr. Wiegowski, if you can unmute yourself, provide your name and address for the record and begin your remarks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and Mayor Pro Tim Adams and other members of the council. My name is John Wiegowski, and I have lived at eleven forty East Kent Road, two seven one oh four, at the corner of Arbor Road for the past twenty years. My house is in the Renolda Park, which is a historic neighborhood bordered by Renolda Road up to the west, East Kent Road to the east, and Arbor Road to the north. The eastern side of the neighborhood joins Arbor Acres. Our neighborhood was created by Catherine Reynolds in the nineteen twenties and designed to have a park-like feel. However, today, traffic studies confirm that East Kent Road and Arbor Road are plagued by high-traffic volumes and cars traveling at a high rate of speed, well in excess of the twenty-five miles per hour of the dispost. Neighborhood residents have often had trouble entering and exiting their property. And more importantly, we are unsafe walking on our neighborhood streets or being in our front yards. The neighborhood has been working with Arbor Acres, this has been stated, and has petitioned the city to develop a traffic calming proposal, including speed bumps to address the speed issue. We are waiting a plan from the city traffic department in the next two weeks. The high volume of traffic in Renolda Park is mainly caused by two factors. First, the neighborhood roads have become a cut-through for people traveling to Coliseum Drive and Renolda Road, University Parkway. The second source of traffic is the residents, vendors, visitors, and staff going to and from. visitors, and staff going to and from Arbor Acres. As Arbor Acres has grown, so has the volume of traffic. As a part of the rezoning request for you tonight, a more comprehensive traffic plan should be developed to include channeling all traffic from Arbor Acres onto the Pilgrim Court, where there is easy access to Coliseum Drive and all points east and west. This will reduce the traffic on Arbor Road, 25th Street, and East Kent Road. Working with the city and Arbor Acres, a viable plan can be developed. The city council should make any rezoning approval contingent on the traffic plan being completed. The planning board in their meeting last month acknowledged that the traffic problem that essentially, quote, "kicked the can down the road," unquote, saying it was not their responsibility to deal with traffic issues. We ask that the city council, which does have responsibility for traffic, require a comprehensive traffic plan for Arbor Acres and the Reynolda Park neighborhood prior to approval of any Arbor Acres expansion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, Mr. King.
Mayor Joins, the next speaker signed up is Jane Wilson.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes. Thank you to the mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, and our city council members. My name is Jane Butler Wilson, and I have lived at 1069 East Kent Road with my husband JD for close to 19 years. I'm a native of Winston-Salem and have enjoyed seeing its many successes over a long period of time, including that of Arbor Acres. In fact, we have been involved in many of the community efforts that have made Arbor Acres possible. Tonight, I have several points of concern, and I appreciate your time to hear them. My first concern is that this issue was thrust upon us without adequate notice, either by the city-county planning board and its process, or by Arbor Acres, which literally is our backyard fence next door neighbor. But the surprise came at the Fourth of July holiday, when many neighbors were away with family for that traditional get together. With that timing, along with COVID and reduced mail service, it was not possible to adequately communicate with many neighbors, especially on such significant and long-term change in zoning in our neighborhood. In fact, just today, we returned from time away with family and the Labor Day holiday, and when our held mail was delivered, there were three letters from the city about this meeting, including the presentation deck. Again, that's another example of how we, as homeowners, are disadvantaged by the unnecessarily rushed timing of this petition. Second, there is a significant contrast in this zoning request that gives most of the advantages to a well-funded, organized corporation that is tax-exempt versus independent, tax-paying citizens in a top historical neighborhood who will be negatively affected if zoning is changed without addressing two traffic concerns: volume and speed. Even greater contrast, the petitioner is a self-contained village, so to speak, totally enclosed by a fenced wall with gatehouses that are manned 24/7 by security guards, security cameras, and with speed bumps, reduced speed limits, and they are quiet from vehicular traffic. Fortunately for its residents, it can provide nearly total of control of its environment. In contrast, consider our situation as tax-paying citizens. We have none of these elements of control for safety, security, quiet, or quality of life. None. No walls, no gates, no guards, no cameras, no speed limit control, no speed bumps, no noise control. We rely almost totally on you. Tonight, we are asking you to do the right thing, to represent us, and to please delay an irreversible decision until Arbor Acres, the city, and our neighborhood can work through a traffic control plan that benefits all of us and ye. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Next speaker, Ms. King?
Patricia Brown.
Ms. Brown? Ms. Brown, would you unmute yourself?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we got you.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, council members, friends and neighbors. My name is Patricia Brown, and I live at 1110 Arbor Road with my husband Malcolm. 1110 Arbor Road is in between East and West Kent on Arbor. We chose to move to Winston-Salem 32 years ago at a time when we could have moved anywhere in the country. Why Winston-Salem? Two of the deciding factors were the deep historic nature of the city and its overall quality of life. In fact, we were lucky to find a house in a neighborhood built in 1929 by Mrs. Reynolds herself, the neighborhood, created from the original Reynolda Farm. Today, with this rezoning petition that will produce even more traffic, those reasons for which we moved here are threatened: our historic property, our historic neighborhood, and our overall quality of life, which I don't believe is your intent. Tonight, I come to you with a unique voice, as I am a member of both neighborhoods in this discussion. I live in Reynolda Park, which is threatened by the increased traffic this rezoning will produce, and I am an Advantage Program non-resident of Arbor Acres, as is my husband, and Arbor Acres wants to expand. So I see the situation from both sides, as I'm sure you're trying to do as well. And I must say, with the current rate of progress towards a comprehensive traffic control plan and the challenges we all have to communicate with one another during the pandemic, my vote is solidly on behalf of the Reynolda Park neighborhood to delay this vote even briefly. Do you truly realize what you have in Winston-Salem, what you're trying to sell to the outside world? Where can you find a city with so many treasures? Places like Old Salem, the Thabara, Digs, Sika, the School of the Arts, Delta Fine Arts, the Stevens Center hosting the Winston-Salem Symphony, and the Piedmont Opera, and historic neighborhoods like Reynolda Park, designed by world-famous landscape architect Thomas Sears for historic homes, many designed by Charles Barton Keane, who also designed Reynolda House. There are unique treasures that define a city, but our quality of life is eroding now. What will I tell our friends and family from out of state now? That it's currently not safe for us to invite our grandchildren to play in the front yard? That it's becoming rare for families with young children to move into the neighborhood unlike what they were able to do some years ago? If that reality or perception is allowed to continue, that it's not safe for young families, then our property values will decrease along with the tax base and the city's reputation. These points concern daily traffic, not to mention the excessive increased traffic for events at the Coliseum with cars backed up at our intersections. How do you expect fire trucks, police, ambulance, or other emergency vehicles to get to us or to Arbor Acres in that uncontrolled and unmanaged environment? The big reality for me is that none of this is necessary. There are major thoroughfares and wide boulevards to Coliseum Drive and Pilgrim Court for truly easy access to Arbor Acres without going through Reynolda Park. The only reason our streets are used is that it provides a couple of convenient shortcuts. And the operative word you should hear is, it is unnecessary. With my Arbor Acres hat on, I can tell you that not everyone there is pleased with this expansion, either the location or the increased height. Neither Malcolm nor I believe the tall design is in keeping with the character of Arbor Acres or our neighborhood. So there is more work to be done inside Arbor Acres, as well as outside with us and the city. In conclusion, with both hats on, I would say this decision is being rushed unnecessarily. A yes or no vote tonight is not a win for the city. I urge you to send this back to the Planning Board and City Department of Transportation so that they can truly involve our neighborhood to find a reasonable and mutual solution to traffic in the area that works for all, or for someone to ask for no consideration of this matter tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Next speaker, Mr. King?
Mayor Joins, those are the only three speakers that have signed up in opposition. We have Rebecca Curran and Adrian Polycron, who have signed up as observers only. So unless something's changed, I believe those are our three speakers in opposition.
Thank you. We will then go back to the proponents. You would have three minutes for rebuttal if you would like. Mr. Applegate?
I'll turn it over to Steve Causey.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Causey.
Yeah, just quickly, I'm sure Aaron will point out in a minute, we're only, you know, rezoning a core central part of the campus. In balance, the density we're proposing is still well within the allowable density under the current district. So we're not really exceeding the allowable density under the current zoning district. You'll see some reference in the planning staff report regarding roadway capacity. Certainly there is a speeding problem. I think our our results indicated 85th percentile speeds were 15 miles per hour over the posted speed limit on Arbor Road, and I think about 10 miles an hour over on East Kent. So certainly there is a speeding problem, as indicated in the staff report. We don't really think it's a capacity problem, but nonetheless, it's a significant traffic. We certainly support any of the efforts of the community in any way we can, you know, to facilitate traffic calming measures. And we'll be glad to continue, you know, the process through Jeff Fensler and the Transportation Department.
Thank you, Mr. Causey. Anyone else for the proponents on the rebuttal? All right, we'll go to the opposition. You would have, opposition would have three minutes for rebuttal if any of the speakers would like to to sign on and comment.
Mr. Mayor, this is John Wiegowski. The only thing, the only thing I would comment on is, in the planning report, it referenced a capacity of the streets of 11,000 cars. I'm not sure where that number came from, but I can assure you that the Reynolda Park neighborhood, which was designed in a park-like setting, was not designed or was capable of handling 11,000 cars per day. There along Arbor Road in front of Arbor Acres, an expansion was done of the roadway, and that perhaps would allow for 11,000 cars. But those cars are then channeled into Arbor Road and East Kent Road, which in Reynolda Park are considerably narrower than what we're looking at in front of Arbor Acres.
Thank you very much. Anyone else for the opposition? All right, seeing no one, I will declare the public hearing closed, and I'd ask Mr. King to give the report of the planning board, please.
Absolutely, Mayor Joins. And I'll ask Amy Crum to go ahead and get that slideshow pulled up, and then we'll begin the presentation. All right. So again, this is just a little over 25 acres, the south side of Arbor Road, across from Arbor Place Court. And the request is a special use rezoning from RMA S, that's residential multifamily up to eight dwelling units per acre, special use to CS, which is campus special use for the uses, life care community, and nursing care institution. Next slide, please. As Mr. Causey referenced earlier, you can see the subject property that is shown there in yellow, and that represents just really what is kind of the core middle piece of the overall Arbor Acres campus. And we've seen several rezoning requests for Arbor Acres over the year. What is before council tonight is really that interior piece, the 25-acre piece that is shown in yellow or in that yellow coloring there. Next slide, please. And this is an aerial image showing the existing buildings located on the subject property. Next slide, please. Just a couple images on site. This is from Arbor Road. This is looking at the western entrance to Arbor Acres. Next slide. And just one image taken on the interior of the site. Next slide. This is the Northwest Winston-Salem Area Plan update that was approved in 2017. You can see the blue coloring there that you see is recommended land use for institutional. So you can see Arbor Acres and the Crossmore property there to the south, all shaded in that blue institutional color. Next slide, please. This is the site plan that was submitted with this request. You can see the the three proposed, first, you can see the dark outline that represents the boundaries of what is proposed for rezoning. And then as you look at the three orange buildings there, those are the proposed buildings. So in this image, the Crossmore property, the Children's Home property would be to the bottom of this image. Kent Road would be back to the left, and then Arbor Road would be up towards the top, just out of the picture of this image. Next slide, please. These are the building elevations that were submitted with this request. Next slide, please. So one of the main reasons for this rezoning request is before you tonight, the current zoning has a maximum building height of 45 feet, and what was proposed on the site plan would range in height 55 to 75 feet. That is, the campus zoning has a taller building height allowance than the RMA S zoning. Legacy in the Northwest Winston-Salem Area Plan recommend when appropriate neighborhood institutions expand in a manner that's compatible with the surrounding area. And as staff reviewed this, we had heard on previous rezoning requests that pushed further east to the adjacent neighborhood, there were concerns about encroachment into that neighborhood. When staff viewed this, we believe this was a reasonable request to go up in height on the interior of the site rather than pushing further east into an existing neighborhood. So we believe it does meet that finding. And the proposed buildings are shown in the lowest portions of the site. There's some additional trees proposed along the southern edge that would hopefully grow up in time and kind of help to break up that view of those buildings that you see. Next slide. This request was heard by the Planning Board at their August 13 public hearing. One speaker was in support and four in opposition. A lot of the issues you you heard this evening were discussed at the Planning Board, largely traffic, and there were some issues around building height. The Planning Board did take a vote to recommend approval of this, seven to one, and I'm glad to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. King. Are there any questions of Mr. King at this point from council members?
I have one, Mayor.
Yeah. Remember Clark?
Yep. We've done nothing but talk about traffic. Is the building height not an issue to anyone? I was expecting it to be an issue. I guess I'm surprised that it's not.
Councilmember Clark, I can just offer a comment on that. As our staff began, when we first saw this request, when it was presented to us, that was our main concern: building height, building appearance, and trying to think about how this building would be viewed from Reynolda Road and from adjacent areas. As we have gotten into the review of this, both comments from the neighbors, discussion at Planning Board, and what you've heard tonight, that has been less of an issue. And I would say largely the issue that we have heard in review of this case is traffic. That is not proven to be an issue that has been voiced as loudly as the traffic issues.
It's been a long time since I've been that far down into Arbor Acres, but are they going to tear down the existing apartment buildings? Are these in addition?
It would involve the demolition of some of those buildings, and I would defer to Mr. Causey, who designed the site plan for probably a little bit more accurate response to that.
Probably been 20 years since I've been down there.
Mr. Causey, could you comment on which buildings would be removed?
Yes. In fact, we're tearing down six residential-type structures and eventually a wing of the admin building. Seven structures in all total will be coming down.
What's the net increase in capacity? Because you're taking seven buildings down and putting up new ones. What's the net increase?
We were proposing 69, losing six, so about 63 net.
Apartments.
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Councilor Sipio?
Yes, my question was also about the height-
Yes, my question was also about the height of the building. The, Mr. King, is the only reason we're seeing this as a zoning is because of the height of the building? Otherwise, if the building were within the 45 feet, we would not be able to have a zoning case at this time.
Councilmember Siffio, yes, certainly the building height is the main issue, and that's what has prompted the change in zoning classification. So that's why the request goes from RM-8S to C-dash-S. What I would say to you is, if Arbor Acres folks had come in and they had proposed to demolish these buildings and come back with a building that fits within the RM-8 height requirement, what we would be bringing back to you will be a site plan amendment. We wouldn't be debating whether the zoning category is correct or not, but what would be before council for consideration was replacing the old site plan with a new site plan that complies with RM-8 height standards.
Okay. And I'm just going to make an assumption that if the building was not four floors, but three floors, would that make it in the 45-foot?
Generally speaking, yes.
Okay. But it would also mean they would have fewer additional apartments?
More than likely without a significant redesign, because if you're not going up, you've got to go out, or you've got to resize the units.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions of Mr. Councilmember McIntosh? We have a question before we recognize you.
I did, I did. So there are the buildings on campus that are three floors. You've got Asbury and Corpening, and I forget what the other building is, but those are 45-foot tall. Is that correct, Mr. Causey or Mr. Applegate?
That is correct. These have a garage under them that's driving some of that height as well.
Okay, so you're essentially talking about going one story taller. Okay. Is it appropriate now to ask questions of DOT?
Could we get a motion on the floor, Mr. McIntosh, if you're ready?
Can, let me get to that. I move for approval of, one, a statement of consistency for approval of this item, and two, W3447, and I've got some comments and some questions.
Second.
Yeah, Councilmember Adams, second to motion. I'm going to recognize Councilmember McIntosh while he can finish, and I'll come right to you, Councilmember Adams.
So I'm going to echo some things that were said here, and I spend a fair amount of time at Arbor Acres, less now with COVID than prior. My mother-in-law's been there for 15 years. And I agree with an awful lot of the statements that the neighborhood is saying, and actually, I kind of agree with all of them, especially one from Ms. Brown about how people access and use the shortcuts instead of coming when I have learned to be a better way to get to campus, which is down Coliseum to Pilgrim. But it's a habit that people have, and it's hard to break. And I do think we need to have, to bring some of our engineering skills there, and also maybe try something we haven't done, Winston, to my knowledge, and then start looking at speed cameras. It is very difficult to break people's habits of speeding. So I feel confident that we will be able to bring an engineering solution to the neighborhood that will make people happy. The question that I have is for DOT. I want to talk about timelines of how long it takes to do a traffic study and actually implement the recommendations there versus how long it will take to build this project so that we don't end up with the problem on our hands before we've got a solution for it. So if Mr. Fensler can just talk to us about timing and the process, and maybe give us some information on what the car counts and speeds were beyond what we heard from Mr. Wiegotsky.
Fensler, could you comment on Councilmember McIntosh's questions and statement?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, Mayor of the City Council. Particularly, Councilmember McIntosh, to answer your question, we'll speak to the traffic calming that you mentioned. So the traffic calming policy is set forth, as you guys are well aware, and is administered by DOT, and the recommendations are presented to City Council. So there is some time that is involved with that. Currently, right now, we have a traffic calming petition that has been received formally from the Neighborhood Association, and it is in the middle of that process. So we have received a formal petition, and staff is working with the neighborhood to develop a design. Right now, staff has actually got a design together, and we're doing some field ground truthing of that design. And that's what the current stage is. We're going out and looking at those different locations and making sure there's no ramifications of something that we would implement in the field. So the process, of course, includes public engagement. It includes public outreach and a public meeting, which is going to take some time to schedule and coordinate. And so we're looking to do that in next month or so. As we finalize our plan, we'll be presenting this to the community and then presenting it, advertising it for a public vote. And once we receive those, it will, of course, be recommended or not. And then, if it's recommended and it meets the 70% threshold, it will be brought before City Council to then have a vote. So there are several months in the process, but we're talking about a project that's likely much longer than that in the grand scheme of things, as far as what Arbor Acres has planned. So as I mentioned, we're right in the middle of this process, and we're hopeful that this can track through in the next few months, and then we could have something that we can go ahead and implement, should it be approved, and then get the 70% needed to do so.
Would it be a stretch of the imagination to think that the traffic calming could be designed and implemented within six months, or are we talking about a year?
Six months is doable, yes, sir.
Okay, and then if I could hear from maybe from Mr. Causey, what their expectations are as far as the timetable for completing construction?
Mr. Causey?
Yes, I'm getting some consultation on this. Construction begin third quarter 2021. January, about a two- to three-year build-out, January 24, probably. But again, wouldn't start until third quarter of 2021.
Okay, so on the one hand, there's every possibility that we could find a solution and have it implemented well in advance of actually the roadways dealing with the traffic, the increased traffic, and could potentially end up with, probably will end up with a solution to the speeding issue as well. You know, I made the motion to approve this, and I know there are other councilmembers that have questions, and I want to hear from them, and I'd like to come back and make some comments later.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Adams?
Yes. I happen to have Salem Town in my ward on Indiana. And my family and people moved over there on Indiana in 1973. I've watched Salem Town become what it is. It's a town. And everyone was worried about the traffic. There's traffic, but no different than the amount of people that have cars at their house now. And it's hard to say that you got one car per house anywhere. Unfortunately, I'm one of the people that cut through Renolda to Kent to 25th. I do all of that, the Coliseum. And it has been that way for 40-plus years with me and my family and others. I just don't want, like they said, the North Ward is right there to the east, and my constituents are concerned that they will be encroached upon by the Arbor Acres. Now, they're okay with what they're doing, but I want also for us to understand, and Mr. King and others, DOT, we always have a lot of neighborhoods wanting traffic studies and traffic calming because they have speeding coming through their neighborhoods. I have speeding now on my street because Wake Forest, the developer built 44 houses, and there are four to five cars in every house now. I just don't, I want us to be fair, and I want us to be just. I don't want people jumping to the front of the line because I know, and Mr. Garrity or somebody, you need to get the council a list of all the communities and neighborhoods that have been asking for studies and having issues with speeding. Over the past decade I've been in the council, I'd like to also have a date with that, when the request was put in or when it was brought to our attention, and where we are with it. Because if we can tell the public publicly that we can do a traffic study and fix the problem in six months, I can't go with that. I can't do that. I can't do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bessie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was trying to request that I be excused in order to avoid the appearance of the conflict of interest.
Well, would you state what the conflict is?
I can if that's needed. The conflict, in this case, it would be an appearance and conflict. Been advised by the city attorney that I'm not required to recuse, but it involves contributors to my campaign.
Certainly, it'd be, I would entertain a motion if a councilmember so wishes to excuse the councilmember.
I move that Councilmember Bessie be recused from this zoning case.
Second.
Your second motion, a second. Any discussion? All right, we'll need to do a roll call vote to excuse Councilmember Bessie from this particular zoning case. Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark? Councilmember Siffio?
I can trip, live there, too.
Yes.
Councilmember Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
No.
I didn't understand. Did you say no?
No.
Okay. Councilmember McIntosh?
Yes.
And Councilmember Department? So we got one opposed, so the motion passes. Councilmember Bessie, you are excused from voting on this. Excuse me, we had two opposed. Beg your pardon, Councilmember Clark and Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you.
Thank you. So Councilmember Clark also asked to be recognized on this item.
Yeah, and I will say, too, I have gotten contributions from folks in the neighborhood and in Arbor Acres, but I will not ask to be excused. I'm going to address this to Mr. McIntosh. I think for me to support this, and I was expecting all along discussion on the height of these buildings. But I drive this neighborhood, to the best of my count, eight times a week. Twice on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, and every, and once a day on Tuesdays and Thursdays. May do it on Saturdays. So I know it very, very well. I really believe what you've got is a lot more than just a traffic study issue here. And I think the traffic issue has got to be addressed before you address the Arbor Acres. The problem Arbor's acre has is it doesn't touch any other road that I know of other than Arbor Road or 25th Street is what it turns into. I believe that's 25th Street. It doesn't touch whatever it is, East Kent. It doesn't go down far enough to touch Robin Hood, and it doesn't touch Thurman. So all the traffic is being dumped on one road, and it's just getting worse and worse. And I drive through it every morning. I have a facility over, for you folks there on Arbor. I have a facility over near the Wachovia branch there at near Pilgrim Court. So I will be there tomorrow morning. But I think it's a much more fundamental issue than a traffic study. For example, there are no sidewalks on any streets in that neighborhood, and that needs to be addressed. And they did turn, I guess that's East Kent, between the intersection and Coliseum. It's one way. They did that in an attempt to slow the traffic down. But I think it's much more fundamental than putting in a speed bump. I think you may actually have to close a road or something, or turn something, another road one way or something. But I do, probably a third of the time, go down Coliseum and Thurman and Pilgrim Court, but I am guilty of cutting through the neighborhood like everybody else. And I have seen Bob Dordington, my predecessor, walk his dog there on Arbor Road with no sidewalk many mornings. But I think this needs to be held until we can at least see what the traffic solution is, because it's terrible now, and I'm a personal witness of it.
Thank you, Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Larson?
Yes, I would support a delay as well. This sort of reminds me of the Burke Mill Road discussion, where we knew we had a traffic study coming down the pike, and we were pushing forward with a development plan that was going to impact the neighborhood. This does not seem to be horribly time-sensitive, that we can't wait another six months or so and try to get something that will satisfy the neighborhood's concerns. I think, I'm not hearing a lot of complaints about Arbor Acres and the mission that they have, or the purposes of their fulfilling, or the need even to expand. What I'm hearing is the fear that's coming with the continual expansion that's not planned to be addressed, the impact on the traffic around the streets. And if, in fact, traffic can be designed, if DOT feels confident that they can prepare a plan that will address these concerns, then I think we can all move forward. But right now, I'm very concerned about simply blindly leaping into an additional expansion without any traffic control clearly in mind, already designed and in place. So I don't know whether we can, whether I should make a motion on this for a postponement that's appropriate for an alternate motion at this point, certainly for maybe a six-month delay to allow the traffic study to come forward and to work with the neighborhood to address their concerns.
Mr. Larson, if you'll hold there for a moment. I know Councilmember McIntosh wants to speak again on this item. Let's see what his thinking is, if you don't mind, Councilmember Larson.
Thank you very much.
I would like to ask the petitioner what the impact of a delay would be. I have no objection to that. That's what council wants, but I just want to make sure that we're not talking about something that has massive impact on Arbor Acres. So if Mr. Applegate could speak to that, I'd appreciate it.
Mr. Applegate?
Yeah, it is time-sensitive for us in the sense that we could probably take a month delay, but we obviously have a great deal of interest in the project, and we have architects and engineers currently working and need to have some sort of certainty as to whether we have the ability to do that zoning height amendment. And then also, it's also a financial issue of if we don't proceed forward. There's obviously some financial, significant financial impact for us.
Thank you. Mr. McIntosh?
My recommendation would be to hold this 30 days and get a read on where we are with our traffic study and our neighborhood involvement, and then make a decision about going forward at that point. If it looks like we're making progress and the neighborhoods or neighborhood folks are comfortable, then we do. If not, we have to come up with a different plan.
So you're suggesting continuance to the October meeting of the City Council?
Correct.
All right, without objection, we can entertain, well, I guess we might want to vote on that. So Councilmember McIntosh's motion is to continue this item to the October meeting. That's Councilmember Clark seconds that. So we will do a roll call on continuing this item. Councilmember Larson?
Yes, absolutely.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Siffio?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Adams? Mayor Pro Tim Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor? Councilmember McIntosh?
Aye.
And Councilmember Department?
Aye.
And a motion that passes seven in favor with Councilmember Bessie being excused. It's the October 5 meeting that we're extending this to. And I closed the public hearing. Do we want to keep the public hearing open as well?
That'd be nice.
We'll just assume that it is. All right, thank you all. Thank you, Councilmember McIntosh. We'll go to item Z8.
Item Z8, Public Hearing on Ordinance Amendment Section 3.2.13 and 5.1.5 of Unified Development Ordinance to clarify approval procedures for special use permits. Planning Board recommends approval petition recommended by Community Development Housing and General Government Committee.
Mr. King, could you give us just a very brief summary of what this UDO amendment is?
Yes, Mayor joins. I think I can do this without the show. Essentially, our UDO has allowed for decades that if you go through the special use zoning process and you have a use approved in your list of uses, so let's say a rock quarry, and that rock quarry generally requires a special use permit approved by City Council. If you get that approved in your list of uses through special use zoning, our UDO says you don't need to come back to council and get a special use permit. That has always been our practice. We did discover in working with the City Attorney's Office, there were two particular sections in our ordinance that didn't provide enough clarification. At the City Attorney's recommendation, we have come back to make that abundantly clear, to provide that clarifying language, and that is what this amendment does. We have had no opposition. The Planning Board has recommended approval. had no opposition. The planning board has recommended approval of this unanimously. This did go to Community Development Housing and General Government Committee as well. There were no issues there as well, and I'm glad to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions, Mr. King? Mr. King, has anyone signed up for the public hearing?
No, there's not.
All right, therefore I'll close the public hearing. I'd recognize Mayor Pro Tim Adams has still come out of your committee for a motion if you're ready.
Yes, I'm ready. Mayor, members of the council, I move for approval of this, I'm looking, is there a number?
Twenty zero three four two.
Twenty zero three four two.
Second.
Second, in discussion. All right, we will go to a roll call. Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Bessie?
Yes.
Councilmember Cipio?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntosh?
Aye.
And Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
As unanimous to approve the amendment, then we go to item Z9.
Item Z9, Public Hearing on Ordinance Amendment to Unified Development Ordinance to Add Graphic Illustrating Certain Dimensional Requirements. Planning Board Recommends Approval Petition Recommended by Community Development Housing and General Government Committee.
Thank you. Mr. King, would you give us again a brief summary of this one?
Yes, Mayor Joins. As you know, we have been working to make the UDO more user-friendly and more intuitive, and as they say, a picture is worth a thousand words. That's really what we're trying to do here, to take very complex ordinance provisions and explain them in a consistent manner through added graphics that have been placed into the UDO. So what's before you, you'll see there is a consistent pattern of graphics that explain things like setbacks, minimum building lines, things of that nature. This is our first installment of these that we'll be bringing. There'll be several more of these to come. It takes a while for staff to create these. They're generated in-house, so as we get another batch, we bring it to you. The implication is we are not making development harder or easier on anyone. We're simply making our UDO more user-friendly. This did go to Planning Board. They were in support of this unanimously, and this also came out of the Community Development Housing General Government Committee with a recommendation for approval, and I'm glad to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions for Mr. King? Mr. King, is there anyone who signed up to speak on this one?
No speakers in opposition on this one.
All right, I'll close the public hearing. Again, I'll recognize Mayor Pro Tim Adams. She's got it this time.
I got it this time. I move for, one, approval of the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and two, approval of UDO CC3.
Second.
Motion second. Thank you. Any discussion? All right, we'll circle back to the roll call. Councilmember Larson?
Can't hear you.
Councilmember Larson, you're muted, I think.
I think we lost him.
I think we did too.
No, he's there.
No, he's still there. He's on mute.
Councilperson Larson, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely. Sorry.
Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Bessie?
Yes.
Councilmember Cipio?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor? Councilmember McIntosh?
Aye.
And Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
That's unanimous. We'll circle back very quickly to item Z8 to make sure, just for the record, Mayor Pro Tim Adams, you have that motion in front of you now.
See, I closed it. Wait a minute. Here it is, again.
All right, would you read it just for the record, to clarify your motion that we've already voted on?
I move for the approval of the statement of consistency for the, no, that's the wrong one. I move for the approval of the statement of consistency for approval of this item and two, approval of UDO CC2.
Great. So we'll mend the record to make that your official motion. Thank you very much. All right, now we go to item Z10.
Item Z10, Public Hearing on Resolution Adopting the Proposed Smith Reynolds Airport Whittaker Park Strategic Area Plan. Planning Board Recommends Approval Petition Recommended by Community Development Housing and General Government Committee.
Mr. King, I believe you're going to make this presentation.
Mayor Joins, Steve Smotherman on our staff is going to make this, and he will be brief in his remarks. Thank you.
Thanks, Amy, if you could pull that up. Good evening, Mayor, Ms. Mayor Pro Tim and the council members. I am under orders to be brief, so I will try to do that. If you could go to the next slide, Amy. We think that the airport and Whittaker Park area is poised for a big economic transformation. There's a significant investment coming in the area, eighty-six million in proposed improvements to the airport that include a taxiway and a renovated terminal, one hundred and twenty million proposed improvements to Whittaker Park, either through renovations on the west side or through a mixed-use development on the east side. Next slide, Amy. And we think that there are three major strategies for transforming in the area. One is promoting economic development. The second strategy is improving area appearance, and the third is highlighting the connections between this area and the Innovation Quarter in downtown Winston. Next slide, Amy. You can see by this slide, the black line is the boundary which encompasses almost 3,000 acres. Almost half the area is in industrial use, which is shown in lavender, and about 20% of the area is shown for residential use, which is indicated by the colors yellow and brown. Next slide, Amy, please. There were four community meetings held to gather, to gather citizen and stakeholder input, with a total attendance of about 250 people. There's very forthright and genuine input, and we took the citizen input and tried to reflect that in our recommendations. Next slide, please. The plan recommendations were based on the citizen input, 2017 Chamber-Earotropolis study input with the Raider Winston Salem Inc., city county staff, the airport, and Forsyth Tech. And these recommendations support five overall goals, which are shown in yellow, and I'm going to very briefly touch on them. Next slide, Amy. The first goal is to strengthen transportation linkages between the airport, Whittaker Park, and downtown Innovation Quarter, which are the three economic magnets. The first recommendation is to determine locations for visitor wayfinding signs between the three hubs, particularly near the airport for visitors that may come in through Smith Rentals. Second is ensure transit routes that coincide with employer shift changes, and the third is to make sure there's state-of-the-art telecommunications throughout the study area. Next slide, please, Amy. As you can see, these three economic magnets create a economic development triangle. Whittaker Park and Smith Rentals are separated by a mile via Akron Drive, and they're both separated from Innovation Quarter by three to four miles, which you can get to via Liberty Street, Patterson Avenue, University Parkway, or US 52, and you can travel between any one of these three hubs in 10 minutes or less. Next slide, Amy. The second goal is to make Smith Rentals Airport an attractive gateway to the city. It's not a bad gateway now, but it can be improved. There needs to be a recommendation for preparing a comprehensive streetscape plan for both Akron Drive and Liberty Street, and to encourage the development of small flex-based buildings, again, along Akron Drive and Liberty. Next slide, please, Amy. The third goal is to recruit aerospace-related businesses. We would encourage the Chamber and other business recruiters to attend aviation-related trade shows to, for the recruiters to develop specific marketing materials promoting the three economic development hubs, and then also to target startup companies that may involve drones or other similar technology to locating the area, because they may have a use to test their technologies at the airport. Next slide, please, Amy. The fourth goal is to cultivate the job skills of area residents. Most important one is, we think, is to develop a coordinated school system, Forsyth Tech curriculum, for aviation-related training, particularly using either Carver High School and the Maisy Woodruff Aviation Lab at the airport that's operated by Forsyth Tech to do some coordination to allow those students to see both classroom but the real-world experience with that. Second is to offer scholarships, allowing workers over the age of 21 to attend Forsyth Tech for retraining and degree programs. This is intended to complement the Hope and Opportunity scholarships for high school graduates. The third is to encourage recruitment of businesses that will have area residents fill new jobs. And the fourth is to use local incentives to attract employers that pay living wages. Next slide, Amy. And last, promote local business assistance programs. Those include Building Rehab Program of the City, the Small Business Loan, RUKAs, and then the Cities Business Training Program and the Small Business Center at Forsyth Tech. Next slide, Amy. And then, it's already mentioned that the plan has been endorsed by the General Government Committee and the Planning Board. The plan was also presented to the Airport Commission in March of this year. And that's all that I have, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Smotherman at this point? Thank you, Mr. Smotherman. That's a great plan. We're excited about that. Excuse me. Councilmember Palmer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have just a couple of quick questions. One, have we been advertising with or staying in communication with curriculum coordinators over at Carver High School to engage those duties? And one, to attend Forsyth Tech for the aviation program?
I don't know. Alan Murdock from Forsyth Tech is here. Alan, could you unmute? Have you heard anything? I've heard that there have been discussions, but I could be wrong.
You call it Alan Younger?
Alan Murdock.
Murdoch. Oh, excuse me, Alan Murdock.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
You can get it, great. Well, thank you, Mayor Joins, and Mayor Pro Tim Adams and city council members. So we started the conversation with the, with Carver High School. Our person at Carver High School is a gentleman named Chris Martin. So he's aware that we want to work with Carver High School. We have not done that as of yet. What I've got our folks working on now is hopefully our building will be completed in December, possibly January. We hired our first instructor last week, and so that person's role will be to build our curriculum specific to our facility. And then my next charge then was to, let's figure out how we get Carver High School involved. And so we're not sure what that means yet, other than to work with the person we have there, but it could be field trips from Carver to the Maisy Woodruff Aviation Center. We're expecting Carver High School to be a big part of this as we move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock. Councilmember Palmer, you have another question?
Because I, I get to attend quite a few of those community meetings. I ask that you do reach out to Carver for them to have that. But also, when you begin to talk about the RUKA funds, I think that we have to look at, with that Liberty Street area, those RUKA funds are only available up to a certain point on that Liberty Street area. So we can't go out and say with RUKA funds available to small businesses, because down on the other end, once you pass 21st Street on Liberty, going all the way down to Auburn Station, those RUKA funds are not available.
All right, thank you.
Need to look at that also before we just readily say to small businesses that can possibly be coming into that area, that RUKA funds are available for revitalization of the urban commercial areas.
Thank you, Councilmember Palmer. Councilmember Adams, I know you want to make a comment if you're also ready to make a motion whenever you're ready as well.
I'm ready, I'm ready to make the motion, and then I'd like some comments.
All right, good, go ahead.
I move for the approval of Z10, the Smith Reynolds Airport Whittaker Park Strategic Area Plan.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Oh, excuse me. Mayor Pro Tim, would you hold on just one second? Is anyone signed up for the public hearing? There is folks signed up for public hearing. Okay, would you introduce the...
Mayor Joins, I can help with that.
All right, please. Mr. King, go ahead.
We've got a few folks here in support. First person is Calvin McCray.
Mr. McCray?
Good evening, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, council members. Always great to be before you all. We're here in support of the plan. It's exciting, and we, at Greater Winston Salem Inc., have also participated in the town halls, and it's just an awesome time for that area to see folks investing in it, wanting to see long-term results. The community has been amazing, and I feel like the conversations between the business community and the citizens who reside there have been really productive, and I think they will lead to some great outcomes for lots of folks. So we're here in support. Also here is a colleague of mine, Laura Lee, and she'll be working with us, really trying to spur economic development. So this is a project she's been excited to get caught up on and understand the project a little bit, a little bit better. Thank you to all of you, because the council has been really great. Your leadership has been fantastic on this, and everyone over at the county and the city who's helped touch this. Thanks so much, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. McCray. Did Mr. Lee want to make a comment?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tim Adams, a member of the city council. I just want to echo Calvin's comments, that we're just so excited to support this opportunity to bolster our airport and the other important economic engines that were outlined. So I look forward to working with the community on this effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee, and welcome to Winston Salem, by the way.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. King. Our next speaker is Tommy Hicks. Tommy, if you're with us, if you could go ahead and unmute, give your name and address for the record and begin your remarks. Mr. Hicks?
Good evening, all. This is Tommy Hicks. I am the community engagement coordinator for Piedmont Tri, for the Piedmont Triad Region of Truliant Federal Credit Union. My address is 107 Capistrano Drive, Winston Salem, North Carolina. And I'm here simply to witness this this evening, and I'm in support of it. I'm excited to see the growth in Winston Salem of this historic landmark, and I'm excited to see the things that will come out of it for the whole city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hicks. Next speaker, Mr. King.
Mayor Joins, it looks like our next speaker is Denise Transu.
Ms. Transu?
Ms. Transu, if you could, if you're still with us, if you could unmute yourself and give your name and address for the record and begin your remarks.
My name is Denise Transu, and I live at 3104 Carver School Road, Winston Salem, North Carolina. I'm a resident of the Copper Road Castle Heights community. And I was just, you know, trying to keep up with this to see what all of this is going to mean for Castle Heights and the residents that live here.
Thank you, Ms. Transu. Next speaker, Mr. King.
Mayor Joins, it looks like we have somebody that signed up. I think they wanted to hear the presentation. I'm not sure if they're in opposition or not. It's Ellen Wallace Cersei.
Ms. Cersei?
Good afternoon, Mayor Ellen Joins and Mayor Pro Tim Denise Adams and council members. Just an observant on tonight, and wanted to just hear what the plans are, and no, I'm not in opposition.
Thank you, Ms. Cersei. Mr. King?
Mayor Joins, there are no more speakers signed up for this case.
Thank you, Mr. King. I will now close the public hearing. And Councilmember, excuse me, Mayor Pro Tim Adams, you were about ready to make a motion. I'll recognize you, and then I'll, if you have a second, I'll come back to you. How's that?
That'll work. Okay. I move for approval of item Z10, the Smith Reynolds Airport Whittaker Park Strategic Area Plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Council, Mayor Pro Tim Adams, go ahead with your comments.
I know we're all excited about this right now with the economy the way it is. Any irons in the fire that we've had, and we've had this one for a while. I know a lot of people are working on it and have worked on it and will work on this plan, but I want everyone to understand that going forward, when we talk about economic development for the city, we're not just talking about the Innovation Quarter and just the airport. And when you put a plan up in front of us now, yeah, we saw this months ago or a year ago, the times have changed. The times have changed. Whatever part the city is playing in this or anybody else, I would hope, Mayor and Mr. Garrity, that we are kept up to speed on this, as Councilmember Parman said. There needs to be a detailed timeline of what's going on with this plan. Because it's one thing to tell us you're going to involve Carver High School, and you're going to involve people from the community that live around it. And then there's no follow-up, and there's nothing for us to hold people accountable to. Again, I support the plan. I'm glad that we're going to be bringing back Akron Drive and Indiana Avenue and the, the stop that is being thought about to be closed and rerouted. I'm glad that's not a part of this, because the community has a right to weigh in on this even more. But I support it, the plan, but I still have some concerns, Mayor and Mr. Garrity, that the East Winston community, the North Winston community, the, all of it, is not really plugged into this, our leadership. Of course, there is the council. But I'm talking about our community leaders, whether it's the Castle Heights community, the Stonewall community, of the Shore Fair Drive area, Greenway community. I just want to make sure that anybody that's coming for funding or zoning changes, and we have not been truly schooled on how this affects our community economically for opportunity, we'll see. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Sipio?
I didn't have my, my hand up, I don't think, Mayor.
Okay, well, thank you very much. All right, we do have a motion and a second to approve this strategic plan. I will go to the roll call. Councilor Larson?
Yes.
Councilor Clark?
Yes.
Councilor Bessie?
Yes.
Councilor Sipio?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Adams?
Yes.
Councilor Taylor? Councilor McIntosh?
Aye.
And Councilor Parman?
Aye.
Thank you. That is unanimous to approve that. We'll now go to item Z eleven.
Item Z eleven, public hearing on items relating to an economic development loan to Front Street Capital. Resolution approving an economic development loan to Front Street Capital and the ordinance amended project ordinance for the city of Winston Salem for the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, recommended by Finance Committee.
Thank you. Mr. Raleigh, could you give us just a very brief comment about what this proposal would do?
Absolutely. Good afternoon, and good evening, Mayor Joins, Mayor Pro Tim Adams, and members of city council. So briefly, this is a request for, from Front Street Capital for two and a half million dollars, two and a half million loan to help finance the construction of a speculative building on Walbert Road adjacent to the entrance of Union Cross Business Park. Front Street is a local commercial real estate development firm, and they are proposing a two hundred and fifty thousand square foot speculative facility with anticipated taxable value of fifteen, of twelve million upon immediate completion, and with the potential for that value to grow to fifteen million upon the completion of future tenant improvements to the property. Front Street is proposing that this building will be constructed within twenty-four months if this item is approved. And I do believe that we have representatives from Front Street here this evening to answer any questions that you may have about the item.
Mr. Raleigh, this, this is a similar project. We did one before with Front Street, and the building was built, sold, and we were fully repaid. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mayor Joins. We, back in twenty fifteen, did a very similar deal with, with Front Street. We will repay within sixteen months of that loan that was made for that particular speculative building.
Okay, thank you. Any questions to Mr. Raleigh before we do the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, Mr. Clark?
What position we're, we're, our, will our loan be in?
Councilmember Clark, I am presuming that our loan would be in second place. I know that there is some bank financing that would take the superior lien positions, but I believe we would be in second position on the loan.
Okay, thank you.
All right, this is a public hearing. Do we know if anyone has signed up? I know Mr. Team, Coleman Team is here, I believe, for any question. I believe anyone else is on the, on the call, so we will close the public hearing. I know this did come out of finance unanimous. I'd recommend, I recognize the chairman, Mr. Clark, if you're ready for a motion, Mr. Clark.
I have been ready.
All right.
I move for approval of item Z eleven, an economic development loan to Front Street Capital.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. And so, Councilor Adams, do you, what, did you ask him to be, okay, very good. All right, any further discussion? Go into the roll call. Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilor Clark?
Yes.
Councilor Bessie?
Yes.
Councilor Sipio?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor? Uh, Councilor McIntosh?
Aye.
And Councilor Parman?
Aye.
Thank you, and I'm sure Councilwoman Taylor is happy, something, another project coming into the southeast ward. He's been quiet, but he's, he's happy about it, I'm sure. Very, very. All right, thank you, Mr. Raleigh, and Councilmember Clark. All right, item Z twelve.
Item Z twelve, public hearing on issuance of a certificate of public convenience and necessity. Ordinance authorizing the issuance of a certificate of public convenience and necessity to Hook and Ladder Entertainment LLC for the operation of one trolley pub in the city of Winston Salem, located in the east, north, northwest, and northwards. Ordinance amending section seventy-eight dash three five eight B of the CD code relating to trolley pub routes and stops on city streets, recommended by Public Safety Committee.
This is a public hearing. I'm informed that no one has signed up to be heard on this. And in that regard, I will then close the public comment, a public hearing, and I'd recognize Chairman of the Public Safety Committee, Councilmember Taylor.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, members of the council, I move for approval of item Z twelve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Now we'll go to the roll call. Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilor Clark?
Yes.
Councilor Bessie?
Yes.
Councilor Sipio?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Adams?
Yes.
Councilor Taylor? Councilor McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilor Parman?
Aye.
Thank you. That is unanimous to approve the certificate of necessity inconvenience. Item Z thirteen?
Item Z thirteen, Mayor Joins' recommendation for reapportment to the Citizen Police Review Board, Tony Burton and Pamela Corbett with terms expiring April twenty twenty-three, and Beverly Carter-Lavery term expiring April twenty twenty-two.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Thank you. Councilor Larson, move. Second by Mayor Pro Tim Adams. Any discussion? Go to the roll call. Councilor Larson?
Yes.
Councilor Clark?
Yes.
Councilor Bessie?
Yes.
Councilor Sipio?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Adams?
Yes.
Councilor Taylor? Councilor McIntosh?
Aye.
And Councilor Parman?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you. Item Z fourteen?
Item Z fourteen, Mayor Joins' recommendation for reapportment to the Citizen Police Review Board, Tony Burton and Pamela Corbett with terms expiring April twenty twenty-three, and Beverly Carter-Lavery term expiring April twenty twenty-two.
Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Council, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Adams. Second by Councilor McIntosh. Any discussion? To the roll call. Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilor Clark?
Yes.
Councilor Bessie?
Yes.
Councilor Sipio?
Yeah.
Mayor Pro Tim Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilor McIntosh?
Aye.
And Councilmember Parman?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Item Z fifteen?
Item Z fifteen, Mayor Joins' recommendation for reapportment to the Citizen Police Review Board, Tawana Will Monroeba term expiring April twenty twenty-three.
Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Councilor Larson?
Yes.
Councilor Clark?
Yes.
Councilor Bessie?
Yes.
Councilor Sipio?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Adams?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim, excuse me, Councilor Taylor?
You're muted.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilor McIntosh?
Aye.
And Councilor Parman?
Aye.
Thank you. That is unanimous. Item Z sixteen?
Item Z sixteen, Mayor Joins' recommendation for reapportment to the Recreation and Parks Commission, Pagavera, Kathy Godra, John Dunkle, and Sean Hawkins with terms expiring May twenty twenty-three.
Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Councilor McIntosh, and seconded by Councilor Sipio and Larson. Any discussion? All right, roll call. Councilor Larson?
Yes.
Councilor Clark?
Yes.
Councilor Bessie?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilor McIntosh?
Aye.
And Councilor Parman?
Aye.
Thank you. That is unanimous. Item Z seventeen?
Item Z seventeen, Mayor Joins' recommendations for appointment to the Urban Food Policy Council, Jacqueline I Ramsey term expiring twenty twenty-three, Carol Ickmeyer term expiring September twenty twenty-one, Brendan Williams term expiring September twenty twenty-two.
Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Adams moves approval, seconded by Councilor McIntosh. Any discussion? The roll call. Councilor Larson?
Yes.
Councilor Clark?
Yes.
Councilor Bessie?
Yes.
Councilmember Sipio?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilor McIntosh?
Aye.
And Councilor Parman?
Aye.
And that is unanimous. That is the end of our agenda. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.
Motion second to adjourn. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Good night.
We adjourn. Thank you, councilmembers.